I'd like to adjourn to the Friday of the United States of America and keep a republic that stands our nation under God, in his law, with liberty and justice for all. Trust agenda item is one industry, um, I'd call them public hearing, water at 4:31. There you go. Keep it going in case anybody comes and wants to speak.
Okay. Has anything changed on this since the last?
It's been a minute or a few minutes.
So we can, okay, so we can each have a copy, that's.
Yeah, there's five big half.
This is not the same one.
This is the most recent.
The most recent.
This is November twenty seven is what it looks like.
Which.
I was just trying to find the date.
Can't keep these. Any mind your.
Nope.
What has changed on this from what you presented last month?
Really not much. Um, we got a color plan here. I'll do it. So really, we've been just playing around, fine tuning the utilities, even the water and sanitary are going this way or the sanitary are going this way now. What you see on the surface, still have four parking spaces there, still have the additions in the same place, still have the psych retaining wall here and here, still have the through area for the fire department. Comments were noted to communicate with the fire department, so they have access to those gates. Uh, there were some comments made to make sure we had offsets uh for these, so it wasn't within that, I think twenty foot minimum, we were twenty, at least twenty-two feet, so no variances would be required. I think we've been really discussing over the past couple of weeks is there's an existing shelter over here where we're putting some utilities, that's gonna be moved over here possibly, and we're contemplating relocating it and enhancing it or replacing it, but what we would like is, you know, cycling approval with or without, uh, you know, a twelve by twelve shade structure. It's beyond, wouldn't require any variances, it's just a shade structure for the kids, that's really the only.
Oh, so instead of the utility, the utility structure.
Well, it's, it's the smokers back there, we have to put a, what do we put back there? In its water or, let's go somewhere this one, we have to put some utilities back there.
Yeah, there's some sort of mechanical, but uh.
Yeah, mechanical. Mechanical units going back there, so it's the only reasonable spot we thought, we didn't want to put it anywhere along, you know, the front street, you don't want to put it in the parking lot, and that was the spot we came up with, so we're gonna reuse, refurbish or replace, to be determined, I would think for planning purposes. Whatever it is, it's gonna be nice, we just have it aside.
So what you're adding, this, the place, the, it's not a place structure, it's a.
Shelter.
Yeah, like a pavilion or something, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It's gonna be four, four posts, a sloping roof there.
Right.
Twelve, fourteen, twelve, twelve below your water line.
Right.
That's really it. Other than that, we're coordinating with power supply, utilities, uh, I'm recording with Mitch, with water department, hook it up. It's an open line, so we don't want to invest all this. But in this project, we, now's the time, let's get a new sanitary line, let's get a new water line, so we're not making things up later. The water line is tying in pretty much right out the street, and the sanitary line is going into the half, half the lanes, so we have a couple of obstacles to construction because of that. That's really it. Any other site questions?
I think so.
Could I just, we're in for ultimate motion, if you want approval, with or without shelter or?
We need to include the shelter.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that was.
We have to, we have to include it, so we have category there.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but you don't, but you don't have to, so. It is, it, it's fine with me, I swear you, we're in.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Yeah.
I mean, we'd like to have it in there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think they want that, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
If, I mean, if you want to call it future, to include future or contemplated structure.
Land.
To be designed.
Land, yeah.
Again, as, if it doesn't go in this project, we put the footage, it goes in.
What are, what are the dimensions on?
Um.
Twelve by twelve. Twelve by twelve?
They could fifteen by fifteen, because we already get smaller.
Well, that's, yeah, that's a good one with sixty kids, you know.
Yeah, yeah. The footage will be involved, it'll be in our plan.
We do have sixty four kids there, we have everybody, so.
Thank you, smokers.
The smokers, really, not in the playground. Uh, okay, we don't, do we do the motion before the public hearing is closed, or?
Uh, we really should close the public hearing.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. It's only got five minutes.
Good shopping.
I'm just gonna keep the public hearing, it'll be a little bit longer.
So we might show up.
Yeah, we just only go through some of the papers.
Hopefully they won't take too long. Okay. You still don't get issues on the lightning?
We have some movement on.
Because what she submitted is still the same.
Right. I received an email, uh, just to say we're talking now about three letters, uh.
It's one twenty seven.
Sorry, one twenty seven. Uh, I received an email from her today, saying that unfortunately she wouldn't be able to make it, but if I could convey to the members of the board that she doesn't intend to put lighting on the sign when she installs, when she installs it, she'd like to just put the sign up without lighting. She was saying that it doesn't really need lighting, and if she ever wants to put lights in the future, you know, she can come back for approval, and she'll be happy to abide by the dark sky stipulations, as I certainly appreciate them.
Okay.
But the application did say that she was.
It does. She just didn't, she didn't edit the application that was sent around to him.
Yeah.
So, so, I mean, I can make a motion to approve the sign, um, as long as it does not have illumination. That we don't agree with her illumination, that the sign with no illumination will be, what we are considering.
What's the other motion? Any discussion? All in favor? Just expect anybody to give a light name?
No, no, I mean, well, yeah, Diana's here. What about that? No one else?
Okay, so, what is changing up this? Is this a new access?
Is this going to be the trustees yet?
This went, uh, in the end, this didn't need to go with the trustees, there's a long period of, of research, as we tried to figure out the use of this property, was it given to use category for it? Essentially, a private park, our system doesn't have a category for that, so people dug back through the records, original founding of Plagueman Shores, couldn't find anything, and so it will remain a non-conforming use. It poses no problem, but there was a long period of seeing if we could go to the board of trustees, zoning board to change any of that, and none of those changed. So in the end, it was decided that they just did H R review, they had last week, and were approved, and then they needed site time review, and so here we are.
And secret. I don't know if T, secret, secret, would you?
I mean, say.
I, I don't know if they've accepted themselves.
It's, it's been extensive D C.
I, I, I know.
View in this, I'm not quite sure what.
If they, if they've done a secret, I suppose we do, or opt make it up to lead agency. They'd have to do it ourselves, otherwise I think.
Somebody has to.
Somebody has to do it.
Well, Delta, normally Delta would know all those details, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, brands.
As far as I understood, the trustees in the zoning board thought it would just resolve in the planning board and the H R departments.
It, it's fine, but somebody has to do it.
Yeah.
Right, which I'm saying, it must be that it's for us to do if we.
It's, it's fine with me, uh, H R testing, except to us doing the agency.
Yeah.
And. If you could find out if, um, if taking secret to secret review, which I imagine they would, just their ex. If I didn't see secret review, that's all.
Very nice, missing, oh, I do have.
I would send the secret submission, the application stuff.
Okay, um.
This department, we may, we had the checklist.
Right, so the various environmental law, all the easy stuff, like in the package, doesn't.
There's an amendment, but it doesn't, doesn't say anything about it. They received a permit from D E C. But did the, the D E C do secret or could issue that permit? Is the question.
Right. So, no.
Project authorization. There seem to be a couple pages skipped here, I don't know, there are no blank pages. Unless that was unintentional.
Yeah, one. Repeat this out if there were different sites, maybe just.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Good God.
Oh, make a motion, uh, that if D E C did not do a secret review, that planning board ought to take responsibility as lead agency. Is there a statement on that motion?
Yeah. That's good.
All in favor?
Could read the, repeat the motion, please.
If, if D E C did not do a secret review.
Yeah.
Then the planning board will undertake responsibility as lead agency, receiving.
Okay, I, I understand. And exactly why do they need the site plan review for basically just doing landscaping, running the stairs and stuff?
Because it's, it's within the waterfront.
Waterfront district, okay, that was one of those ones, because if I were to do something in my backyard, do I, because it's essentially the front yard of, or a yard, short and owned by all, I don't know.
But it's in, but it's in within a hundred feet of the shoreline.
In the shore, so, thanks, okay.
That's the difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, okay, so.
I just, and if it was permitted by the D E C, what do they have to do?
I would imagine. But we still have to have the secret.
Right, so.
I mean, we can review, all right, before there is a final decision, it has to be secret.
Does that stairway I'll go, start in any property owner's backyard, so to speak, or is it?
Yeah, it starts on Lake Shore Drive or whatever, it does, it's on the front.
Okay, so it's neutral. It's not in Jimmy's best.
No.
God, that's what I mean.
At least it doesn't look like that in the map. So.
They certainly have a lot of paper.
Chris, did they submit large size documents?
No, we have, but we have, we have two digital files, but, like, yeah, I was, I was trying to print these out and the printer was choking on the different files, so some of them, uh, some of them were partial because big pages didn't, but these bigger pages have been shrunk down to fit, um, just because there were several different sized pages in the thing. Make bigger ones. It's effort.
It'd look like a better cost for you to get down to the, like, I mean, reformed, important steps that I'll have to.
Well, if, if they want to spend the money, that's their.
Yeah, that's right, go for it.
It's not, that's not our purview, um, as long as it's not our tax dollars, yeah. So, yeah, I guess the question is, where is the seeker? If it was done so that the D E C could issue it's permit, you would think that they would need to do it before they get into the first. So I guess it's a question of, you know, checking with D E C or Delta and saying, where is this? Um, Delta should have been able to supply that, they don't, they don't have that stuff.
Well, so, yeah, there were a bunch of documents.
No, it's, it's.
Permits, that's what I hear you, those aren't.
Yeah, it's, so.
Okay, so we need to get the secret.
Right, and I would be so surprised if D E C wouldn't have done it.
Yeah.
To issue a permit, so you have to foil D E C, well, not to foil D E C.
Chris, will you ask someone from Delta to come to our next meeting, show us through this?
Yeah. I was just looking through my documents to see if I missed anything on secret, but no.
Yeah.
There's no mention of it in D E C documents.
So we can't act unless we have secret. We, we need the motion, very fast motion, it's been accepted. We have a motion about becoming lead agency.
I guess we would know, I thought, all in favor? Of course, be lead agency, okay?
And I think it's important, if secret hasn't been done, then Chris will be, so it's not too late for one more.
Yeah, this has to be, you have to, um, turn this to next meeting anyways, it takes, they need to get applications, it's next now.
But if we get secret in the interim, then it can be put on H F G F to allow us to be.
Yeah, I mean, it is a sort of.
Is everyone had a chance to look at the minutes?
Well, I suggest that public hearing be closed before we, before, before anything.
Uh, I just want, wait, does somebody want to?
No, after the minutes, I'm gonna vote, vote to adjourn, so.
Oh, well, no. Okay. I, I, I vote to approve the minutes. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm closing the public hearing, we have four fifty-two, no one has appeared to make any comments.
I was ready for motion.
Ready for motion.
I, I would be happy to make a motion to accept the site plan with the proposed land, um, structure, or shelter in the playground area, um, that would be fifteen by fifteen or smaller.
Second. All in favor?
I'm ready for your here.
First person? First person, one of the first person. Oh, yeah.
We're waiting for you. I second, I second that.
All in favor?
All right, everyone, thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Yes, Merry Christmas, happy, happy New Year, everybody. Don't go out and shop. Support your local businesses. You can just pop in and say hi.
So.
They don't have food, they're pro seco. They might have chocolate. Jake Gorman had chocolate?
Yep.
Oh, should we eat these chocolates? So I don't know what Judith might want for Christmas, but, you know. So tonight I do, I see. And everything you have, yes, they do. Oh, great. I would love that. Thank you.